Now I'm a little...
General support.
All right, we ready? Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the town meeting with our Board of Education. I have to commend them that this is typically our meet the candidate night, but running unopposed, they could have just let the night go by the wayside and instead all decided to give their time to share some of their thoughts on questions that the community may have. So I just think it's incredible that they came out tonight and thank you all for that. Our school board members take an oath of office. They advocate for public education, they create and revise district policies, they study issues and regulations, they vote on issues that affect our district and promote public education in our community and beyond. Each member serves without pay. I'm Deborah Tandoy and I'm the Developmental Asset Coordinator for the Fairport Community and the Fairport District. And tonight is an opportunity for you to hear from five board members, four are here and one will be on here shortly. And this event is for community members had the opportunity to submit some questions online and come in person, and we will collect any of those questions that you may submit to us and pass them on to the asset leaders. So the asset leaders will be facilitating the evening, and it's always such a pleasure to work with our students because they're exceptional youth who are always so interested in serving their community and serving their schools while developing their leadership skills. So thank you for coming out this evening. And here's the process that we will follow this evening. The asset leaders will each do a brief introduction of our board members, and then Peter Forsgren and Dr. O'Leary Sargent will each have opening comments. This will be followed with about an hour of question and answers. We will start with the questions that were given to us online and add as we go on throughout the evening. Each question will have about five minutes that we'll spend on that question, and we ask that each board member just talks for about two minutes, so if there's a couple of you that want to speak to the same question, we'll have enough time. When you get to close to two minutes, the facilitators will let you know that so that you can make a closure statement and then move on. All questions will be for every board member, we will not direct them specifically, and any question that we do not get to tonight, we will certainly have a detailed answer on our Fairport website for everyone that did submit questions. So when we conclude the question and answer portion, we will have a closing statement, and we will be here no later than 8:30 PM. So with that said, I want to thank you all for coming out this evening, and again, thank you Board of Education and students, and I will turn it over to Jordan O'Connor.
How's everybody doing tonight? My name is Jordan O'Connor, I'm a junior at Fairport High School. So good evening, and welcome to this spectacular event here at the notorious Fairport High School. It is my pleasure to introduce Board of Education member Damon Buffum. Mr. Buffum is completing his fifth year on the board, and Mr. Buffum has seven kids, seven kids, there we go, sorry. Got a cough, it's allergy season, you know what's up. One of which, Grace, will be graduating from Fairport High School this year. He also holds the distinguished title of grandfather, and that's, you know, that's a lot of work. I have a couple grandfathers of myself here. So we appreciate your work and thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Emma Kelly, I'm a sophomore, and it's my pleasure to introduce Board of Education President Peter Forsgren. Mr. Forsgren is completing his sixth year on the board, his five children have graduated from or are currently attending Fairport Schools, and Mr. Forsgren is running unopposed in this year's election. Thanks for all you do, Mr. Forsgren.
Hi, I hope you're all doing really well tonight. My name is Madison Yandow, I'm a senior here at our wonderful school of FHS. It is my pleasure to introduce Board of Education member Kevin Glover. Mr. Glover is completing his first year on the Fairport Board of Education. His two daughters were both members of FHS class of 2016, and on behalf of all of our students, I would like to thank you, Mr. Glover.
Good evening, my name is Sam Schreiber, and I am a senior at FHS, and tonight I have the honor of introducing Board of Education member Mrs. Nupp, who is not with us at the moment but will be arriving shortly. Mrs. Nupp has devoted nineteen years as a Board of Education member, which really goes to show her commitment and dedication to the welfare of all of our students. Her two children are both graduates of Fairport Central School District, and she is a very proud grandma. We're very appreciative for everything that Mrs. Nupp does and look forward to her joining us shortly.
Hello, my name is Holly Maxwell, and I'm a junior at Fairport High School. It is my pleasure to introduce Board of Education member Dr. Judy O'Leary Sargent. Mrs. O'Leary Sargent took an open seat on the board this past fall and is running unopposed in this year's election. Two of three of her children are Fairport graduates, and her daughter Sinead will graduate this year. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication to our school district, Mrs. Sargent.
Hello, my name is Taylor Chapman, I am a junior here at Fairport. It is my pleasure to tell you about the Library Board of Trustees member. Belinda O'Brien is a professor and director of the Graduate Library Media Program at St. John Fisher College. She has one adult child, Sheila, who is a graduate of Fairport Central School District. She is running unopposed. Thank you for your time on the board, Ms. O'Brien.
So I think we're going to start with questions here, am I right? Oh, no, I lied, never mind, never mind, we're going to turn it over to the board.
So opening, Judy and I are the ones running for election this year, unopposed. As noted, I have five children, love it, they two have graduated and three still in the school district, and because of having five, not quite as many as seven, thanks for outdoing me, we've experienced so much of what Fairport has to offer, right, from the early morning music program to AP classes and Regents tests and after-school clubs, sports, plays, musicals, the works, not unlike all the experience when I talked to the students just beforehand, all the things that they're doing and how busy they are. And it's been wonderful in the sixteen years we've been here in Fairport, and there's been the ups and downs through that time period, and yet we've thought it's been a wonderful experience for our family. A couple weeks ago, though, I did have a friend, also a staff member of our school district, asked me a question, "How do you hold school board members accountable?" The timing of the question I found fascinating in that the deadline for running and having your name on the ballot for the school board position had passed. And that was part of the answer to the question, or the significant answer to the question, that you hold school board members accountable by having competition. And not having competition, similar to three years ago, we're able to kind of just cancel meet the candidate night and go unopposed, I suppose, but we thought this year that it would be perhaps more prudent to make ourselves, I don't know what's the word, vulnerable, perhaps, or exposed to the question so that people can feel like they're having an understanding of the thoughts behind the board, the reasonings and what's going on. And so looking forward to that discussion tonight, it is a little nerve-wracking perhaps in some ways, and grateful for the students, though, for being out here tonight to help facilitate this opportunity. But I am grateful, I'm grateful for the opportunity that's been given to me to be a part of Fairport School District in a way that I wouldn't have been. I know it has greatly benefited my children, and I'm thankful for that opportunity.
Hi, and I wanted to take a minute to introduce myself, I'm Judy O'Leary Sargent. I have been on the board since October. I have three children who've gone through the district, my youngest is a senior, my oldest is graduating college next year, he's going to be looking for a job in engineering in case anybody's hiring, and my middle is a sophomore also in college. I have been a clinician in this area for over twenty years, which feels like a very long time. So I have heard from, I work with adolescents and adults, and I've heard from students in our district as well as all the neighboring districts, and so I feel like I have a lot of data about what our children's experience is like, from all different kinds of kids. And I have to say, my impression of Fairport has only grown stronger over the years. I think that we create a vibrant, challenging, well-rounded educational experience that I have been very impressed with, not just from my own children, but also the children that I've assisted along the way. The community that we surround our children with, the expectations we have for them in genders and environment, which I believe involves all kinds of growth, and those opportunities are musical and artistic and intellectual, and I think it's impressive. My experience on the board has been really interesting. Peter asked, when I interviewed for the position, did I have an idea of what the time commitment was, and I said, "Yes." No, no. It's a really active board, and we meet frequently. There are two things that guide our discussion, every discussion really, and that is what is best for the students and sustainability, whether what we are offering today, what we offer to my children, we have the ability to offer children of the future, and that permeates pretty much every discussion, and the discussions are pretty frequent. We talk about where we're aiming, the 21st century model that we are working towards in learning spaces and facilities and programming. We have expectations of our students and of ourselves in terms of what we're offering. And I think that the statistics are really good. When we look at what was in the commentator, did that, I think, went out today, and they talked about the class of 2017, and ninety-eight percent are graduating and ninety percent are going to college. And I don't believe college is the only pathway to success, I believe we offer lots of growth opportunities that allow our children to become who they're going to be. The budget has been an ongoing conversation, and we keep an eye on our priorities, what we are hoping to offer our students, and what we want to be able to offer in the future, and our attempts to decrease our reliance on our savings has, I know, been a really difficult thing this year, and I understand that. I am incredibly impressed at our faculty and our staff, and as a psychologist, Fairport was always my favorite district to work with because people are willing to bend over backwards for our students, and that was impressive and wonderful. And so to have to adjust staffing levels is incredibly hard, and I understand that it makes people nervous, but I believe it is what has to happen in terms of decreasing our reliance on our reserve funds. And I see so much strength in our system and so much potential for our future. That's me.
So just a reminder to those of you in the audience, you have the ability to submit questions on the index cards you picked up on the way in. So now we're going to jump to the first question, and this is just open for the entire board. So how do you view the Board of Education oversight of the budget process?
I want to say, and I think we've, as a board, we have set up a little bit of ground rules, and that's allowing Peter and Judy to respond first to questions because you are running this year, so we'll all chime in over time, but if you want to take the lead on it, that'll be fine.
It's mighty kind of you.
Yeah.
What is our view on the board oversight of the budget process? Right, great question, love budget, I'm a numbers guy, but board oversight, remember it came up last year even, the question of board oversight in general, are we advisory or not? No, the board is the top of the organizational pyramid. And being at the top gives you certain responsibilities and others that, and certain things that you shouldn't do, right? So we've had many discussions as a board and with the superintendent of staying in our lanes, and in the budget process, that's a great question. So we set goals at the beginning of that budget process, and we, our budget goals are different than the goals that are published on our website in terms of goals for the district, and for example, one of the ones I know that has come up many times is we need to decrease by at least a million dollars our reliance on reserves, and that's spread out over several years. That was our goal. How that gets accomplished was pushed down into those who are living and breathing it on a daily basis where we are not living and breathing it, but that was the goal that was established, and the constant question throughout the process, are we arriving? Will this get us there? What will get us there? And those are the types of goals that we set, and I believe that that is. We set the vision, we set the standard, where are we going, what do we need to accomplish, and that's our role. There's responsibilities, as we've learned, we've dug into a book many times, How to Be a Better Board Member, right, that when certain pots of money, if you will, I'm not sure how it is, but technology comes to mind as an easy example, that we authorize certain amounts of money to be spent, but we don't get down into the nitty-gritty, how much is going to be sent on the new thing I saw, what was it the other day, Dudley, a boogie board or something, you know, versus an iPad and laptops, and we don't get down into that, but we do have access to the technology plan, right, so we provide oversight of the plan and making sure that it fits within other areas, all the other aspects of our goals that are there. But we provide that level of oversight to say, "This is where we need to go," or "This is what we want to spend," or "This is what we will allocate to spend," but how that gets divided up is not our lane, so the oversight is at a higher level, as I see it at least in terms of the board's responsibility in the budget.
So a couple of things. First, it's important to note that none of us went to college and majored in being on the school board, right? That's not something that we did, that's not something I do in my day job. We are volunteers, we're paid zero, and that's not a problem, I get a raise every year and I appreciate it. We do the best we can, we're parents in Fairport, we're community members in Fairport, we're taxpayers in Fairport, right? We want the same things as everybody else does. It's a difficult process, budgeting is difficult, that when you first become a member of a school board, you go to a full-day financial, finance training with Mineral County School Boards, just to learn about the process of budgets within a school district. And there's lots of state mandated factors, there's lots of things that we have to do, there's things that we want to do, there's a certain amount of discretionary funds, but it's not as much as you would think, not as much as you'd hope for. And when budgeting really goes into transportation and fuel and staffing and insurance and healthcare, so our ability to sort of manipulate or use the budget as we want to sometimes isn't there for us. So again, as Peter talked about and as Judy talked about, our role is to stay in our lanes, and our lane is defined by bookends of providing a sustainable, sustainable growth and future for the district as a whole, and then providing a program for kids or for students that allow us to experience the best program as possible, and then we work with Brett and administration to oversee the budget process that meets those goals. Thanks.
I'd just like to add one thing. Talk about staying in our lane, we have the responsibility as well as the superintendent to go to Albany and to be, we talk to our legislators, we tell them what our needs are, because they are a primary source of income for us, and so when we say, "Oh, fifty thousand dollars, it's not going to cut it this year, please," I think I added the "please." It's one of the responsibilities that we have to make sure that we are advocating for the best education and the best return on our investment, because as taxpayers, we've all paid that money to Albany or to Washington DC, how much of it is coming back to our district? And that's an advocacy role that we have to do, so it's a little bit outside of what the question was, but it is one of the responsibilities we have is to make sure that we not only look at the, what are we going to spend it on, but are there ways to get additional income that meets the needs of our students? So I just wanted to add that piece.
I'd like to add one additional thing, in that we're also operating under a cap on revenues, two percent on the tax levy, which makes it that much more difficult to come to a balanced budget.
Okay, question two. Has the recent reduction in staff been done because those positions are no longer needed due to a lower student population, or have the positions been eliminated due to budget constraints?
Well, the question was an "or," but I think the answer is a "yes," right? So we definitely have lower enrollment, and that's going to impact some of the decisions that are made. The budget constraints, one that was just mentioned, right, in terms of a tax cap, removing the ability of local, the local school boards to manage the ups and flows of revenue has been a significant loss in local authority. But the constraints had required us to do things and look at things in ways we perhaps wouldn't have done, so that it's not entirely the budget constraint itself, we were able to look at programs and ask certain questions, like, is this the best way to do it? Can we provide the same experience in a different way? And as human beings, we struggle with that answer because we're all very uncomfortable with doing something different, and some of what's in that budget for sure is we're going to do something different with the goal, and the one that I've heard the most often, I guess, people at least coming to our public meetings have been the technology, computer labs, right, but the whole time in our discussions, because we've had students, because we want them to get the same skills, is will they be taught internet safety? Will they be taught cybersecurity? Will they be taught keyboarding? Will they be taught coding? What's all those different things? And our response as a board has been, we need to make sure they get these skills, but just because they're not going to get it the same way they got it, doesn't mean it won't be a good experience. And I think there has been some struggle to say that we can't do it a different way. We have to. The "or" part of that question requires for us to look at our programs and say, can we do things in a different way and find some efficiencies? The answer is yes, there has to be efficiencies there, we may not always know or recognize, we have to be willing to try new things, and again, as human beings, I find that to be a challenge in my own life personally, but as an organization, everything there, and so we're going to do that, right? So to me, it's yes to both sides.
And I think the technology is actually a good example, because it was a long, long time ago when I was in high school, and I went to a separate room to learn computers, and that's not how computers are anymore. We didn't have a computer in our house, we certainly weren't walking around with smartphones. Our technology is so much more integrated into our experiences, and I think that that's a logical way for it to be taught in the high school and the elementary school and throughout our educational experience. But changing from the way that we're doing it to a more integrated way, I think provides some challenges. But I think that the education that we will provide will be solid, and the children will be exposed to all kinds of different things in terms of technology and the hack lab and coding, and I don't think where we're aiming is changing, I just think the delivery is.
So allow me to use a hypothetical example, to simplify the way I think about it and the way I communicate. So I have seven kids, this is hypothetical, but it's sort of a hybrid reality, hybrid theoretical reality. So I have seven kids, and therefore, when I had seven kids that lived at home, I had to have a big house. I had to buy a lot of food and have a lot of infrastructure to support seven kids at my home, and then...
Were any of those kids hypothetical?
Well, at times they were, so, but then as the kids have grown up and left the house and gone to college and gotten jobs, I have a big house with a lot fewer kids, and so I'm spending my money differently. Now, at the same time, my mortgage has gone up, my insurance has gone up, my expenses have gone up to maintain that house, and at the same time, I took a pay cut at work. This is hypothetical, of course, but nevertheless, so my revenues are capped or declining coming into my house. I have fewer kids living there, so I don't need the big house, I don't have to buy as much food. Now, so I've downsized my house, I've moved to a smaller house. That's sort of what's happening as a district, right? We do have declining enrollment, therefore, our staffing needs to be appropriately sized to meet the needs of the kids. We are student-centered, we want to give kids opportunities to participate in all the programs that they ever have. Now, we have to do things differently, as Peter talked about, and in some cases, we have staff that's built for a larger school district from a population standpoint, and at the same time, our revenues have been capped, or the state aid, if you pay attention to the budget process, our state aid increases like 1.46%, right? Well, healthcare and retirement and so forth, those costs go up a lot faster than our revenues are increasing, so we have to adjust our house, if I'm saying, in order to ten seconds. Anyway, that's my hypothetical reality analogy.
How should the Board of Education address the outdated faculty, facilities, and curriculum of technology education so that students are engaged in learning skills relevant to 21st century careers?
I told them I'd always be willing to jump in since it was my turn to be elected this year. Wow, what a great question. I would love to know who asked that, then. This will be a challenge of our day, is having a conversation similar to this before we got started. One of the people who spoke last night mentioned Moore's Law, and I've tracked that law and used it in many presentations I made at conferences, because technology increases so rapidly, right, it's an exponential increase, if it doubles every two years, it's just incredible how quickly we can be overtaken, and so what are the skills and knowledge base that is needed, and how much does it change, and what doesn't change, right? The English language itself changes, I suppose, we add new words every now and then, or change the words that I used to use as a kid that don't mean the same thing now. But those are skills there. So we have to look differently, right? We have to be able to do things with a vision further than what we have done. And to our superintendent's credit, he took that mandate from the board, I say mandate, to say, "We have to have a long-term plan," and we put a framework around it, Damon's been calling it bookends, that we hadn't entirely had, we always had the perspective of having a great student experience, whole child, every child experience, but we didn't always have the framework of sustainability, and five years down the road, and ten years down the road, and twenty years down the road, what's going to change? I can't tell you what would be, how life will be like in twenty years. I never could have imagined the smartphone, right, when I was your age, I had no idea that that would exist. And so, but we have to set our foundation and make sure it's secure enough to adapt to those changes, make sure that our professional staff, those who are trained in this area, are constantly having the resources and the ability and the tools to get together, rewrite curriculum, look at the curriculum, what's been outdated, throw that away and rewrite new stuff. I mean, we have to be able to take that long-term perspective, and that's what we have now is we get the framework of our long-term plan to say, "Let's revisit these things, and let's make sure we make our decisions within this framework."
So I'll jump in. So another thing, technology at the kindergarten level looks a lot different than technology in high school. So we talk about the district advisory council, and another priority that came out there of that activity was vertical and horizontal programming. And so what we're hoping to do through the DAC process is to start technology at an early age, and what that looks like is Lego clubs and hack labs and all kinds of things at the elementary level, and then offer more opportunities through courses and through clubs and through activities as children grow and expand through the district, and then have those programs linked together so that what we're learning in the seventh grade is building off of what we learned in the fifth and fourth and third grade, right? We're building capacity, we're building engineering mindsets, if you will, and that's, it's a process. Again, that's something that's become a priority for us, and so we're looking at that. Also in our facilities planning, we're looking at building mobile 21st century workspaces that provide technology and provide opportunities for kids to use technology as they learn in school. That's all part of the long-term plan we had, and Peter really talked about this, we now, it's exciting, we are building a three-to-five-year rolling plan, which we've never had before, and it allows us to move beyond year-to-year budgeting, if you will, and planning for doing what's best for this particular year. We're now building our budget, we're building our plan, we're looking at our facilities in a longer-term, longer-term vision, anticipating things more effectively than we have in the past.
All right, thank you. The next question is on somewhat of a different topic. Why hasn't the board moved forward on changing school start times to those recommended by the American Academy of Pediatrics?
Didn't expect that one tonight.
Why don't you take that one?
Thank you. And all the questions I thought we might get, that wasn't one of them, but I should have, because occasionally in Wegmans I still get stopped, where are we with those things? So it's still in our list, right, in terms of things that we are looking at, because of exactly what was referenced in the question, the American Pediatrics, and I still see it, we get news clippings every week, and here it comes across, that this is consistent finding. And so why aren't we moving on it? Well, it's not that we're not, the constraints that we find ourselves in mean it's more challenging than we could have imagined, right? have imagined, right? So, that the potential cost is significantly high, we need to work that in. We have to take it in. As I think I mentioned at the start of our long-term planning process, there were several things we learned. We had a bus study done, right? Multiple years ago, that recommended the cutting down of our bus fleet. At the same, several years later, then, we had a study done on changing of start times, which recommended that we increase the number of buses that we have in order to accommodate it. We had too many things going on in isolation that had to be done away with, right? We had to put things together in a long-term plan. And this is where that one ends up. We haven't fleshed out the long-term plan in terms of, we have now adopted our strategic initiatives, which I guess more or less make up the skeleton or the backbone of it. So, it's still out there. We haven't given up on it. But because it's going to have expenses associated with it, we need to make sure we're doing it in such a way that we don't endanger ourselves in other ways, right? So, changing of start times is awesome and will benefit the students. But at the same time, we're changing their start times, we don't want to have to take away programs, so we can pay for the changing of the start times, right? We want to be able to do these things more thoughtfully than we have done in the past, which is many times making decisions independent of anything else. And so, that's what's coming to an end.
I'd like to add that, in addition to that, there were questions about sports and start times for games after school in conjunction with other districts. And we're trying to coordinate with other districts later start times. We've been in discussions, and that hasn't come to fruition as of yet. But that was another reason why we haven't pursued the later start times.
So, I'll just add real quickly. We don't want to put the cart before the horse. And this is one of those instances where if we changed impulsively, because we knew it was the right thing to do, but if we did change around start times initially, that would be, that would provide barriers for making other changes that are right for the district to do. So, what we said is, start times and modifying start times is an appropriate consideration, but we need these other things to happen first. And so, that's where we're at right now. We're working with the district advisory council, we're looking at facilities, we're looking at bus routes, we're looking at all kinds of things that will be impacted by start times. And we just want to make sure we settle those first before we jump into something.
Okay, thank you. Again, on a different note, how is the board addressing the increase in student mental health issues and trauma issues?
So, let's see. I think that there are all kinds of initiatives going on in Fairport, some of them very innovative to address what is a national increase in adolescent depression and anxiety rates. So, let's see. We have PBIA.
CPAC is one of the things that you are participating in as students that helps the mental health of your fellow students. And I say this with a great deal of respect for everything that you do throughout the year. And we haven't mentioned Brotherhood/Sisterhood Week now. Some people say one week is not enough, but my goodness, all of you know the impacts it's had on yourselves, the impact you've had on fellow students. That's one thing that we have been doing for many, many years, that is an opportunity for us to talk about, how we help and support each other, however we are, wherever we are. I did want to raise that particular thing. The other question, topic that, since we visit each building once a year, we see a lot of little things. And this year was the first year I saw a calming room in the elementary schools, something you would not have seen as, you know, students, because you're past that. But there are a number of different things that are happening in every building that we feel is appropriate to the needs of those students where they are. And the faculty and the administration's been very, very focused on getting things in process for kids in need, and not necessarily defining what the need is, or limiting them to a particular kind of need. So, that's something that I think you can, many of you can relate to.
Relative to Monroe County, and I think nationally, this is a national phenomenon. I think as a district, we've generally been proactive in attacking this, right? Partnering with different organizations within the county and the community to recognize that something has changed. I don't have the expertise to know what it is, why we're having an increase and a spike in mental health challenges with our students. But we do recognize that if we don't meet those needs, then we can forget about English and math and anything else, that that type of learning won't happen if we're not trying to meet the needs of the students. So, I'm glad that we've been proactive enough to recognize education can occur unless the mental health and the other physical health and other needs of our students are being met.
On a very pragmatic level, I'll say that what we're doing is great. It's not good enough, obviously. We still have mental health issues in the district, and we want to get in front of those and help address those. But all these programs that we talk about cost money. And it's a large part of our budget, as we go back to the budgeting question. It takes a lot of money, and it takes a lot of resources in order to meet the growing mental needs of our community. And the more money, again, with the limited revenue we have coming in, the more we have to allocate, or the more we willingly and do, because if we need to, towards mental health, the less is available for other programs. And so, it's a balancing act. And obviously, mental health, as Peter said, if we don't have mental health within our district, you can forget about math and English and art and everything else, right? It starts there, so we have to, you know, meet those challenges first. But it does take a lot of resources.
Can I just add one more thing? Today, in my email, came a draft from Monroe County School Boards on our position, a position statement on a mental health awareness for us to present, again, to Albany, to the federal government representatives, on what it is that we're looking for, what it is that we need from them to be supporting of kids, because it doesn't just happen in schools. We need beds, we need placements for students to go when they are in crisis situations. And schools are the place where they often find that they're in crisis, but that's not where we can often provide the answers for them. So, we need to look at our whole community, our whole state, what can we be doing? So, there's a whole new position paper. We have a series of committees that meet monthly in Monroe County, and our whole information exchange program, information exchange program this year dealt with a variety of different issues of mental health, and what can we be doing in our own school districts, in our area school districts, in our state, to help get this word out that there's a crisis here.
Thank you, guys. Has the district examined any administrative efficiencies? And is there a way to reduce any of these to halftime administrative positions?
So, yes, in terms of reorganizing and doing things differently, if we look at ourselves, you hear comments from time, and you know people are always aware of how we compare to others. Overall, we compare favorably in terms of our administrative staff. And as a big organization, 6,000 students, 1,000 employees, running that is imperative to do it efficiently. But everything, I say everything, I guess that's an absolute. There's not things that we're not willing to look at. And so, that is, and I know the superintendent has taken that on, to look at, how do we reorganize ourselves and reassign the workload and this and that? The possibility may be there. I don't think we have the answer entirely yet to answer that question, at least at the board level, we haven't had information enough to say, okay, we definitely want to move forward with this or that in terms of cutting or changing of positions. But we do know that it's being looked at and reorganized, and that's appropriate. Trying to keep it in the right lens, though, right? If we are on the lowest end of administrative ratio to students and to staff, you know, what do we do? Do we cut off our, what's the phrase? Now, I can't remember. Nose to spite our face, right? So, again, are we doing it thoughtfully and proactively, or thoughtfully and purposefully? So, that's yes. Always open to looking at things, and it will continue to be open as needed.
So, what is the district doing to ensure that a safe and productive environment can be maintained at Minerva Deland without an assistant principal?
Sorry, that was Minerva Deland specific, right? So, it's a good question. I have to ask myself, I suppose, if that starts to get out of our lane somewhat, in terms of, we know of things going on, and decisions were made, which we wholeheartedly support. And I don't want to give an impression that the buck doesn't stop here. Indeed, as a board, it does. And so, right, we are, what is the word? Trying to look at the feedback that we receive, but also, what is it that can be done? And what is it that should be done in light of the constraints that we have? And so, that was one of them in the prior year, right? The question just before that, or another, are we looking at administration? And that was one, in terms of declining enrollment at school that has this, to change the resources that were there. So, to add a century over an assistant principal, and to look to the leadership to say, under these constraints now, it's time for you to take this by the horns and manage the situation as is. And so, we have our first year under our belt. Now, we can revisit that and say, how did this year go? Do we need to make tweaks to the decision that were made in the past? And there has already been discussions along those lines about what tweaks will be made. How do we then provide the support? So, those aren't decisions that are made already by today, but those discussions are going on at this time.
And just to build on that, again, if we stay in our lane, we think about our lane and our bookends, right? We have the bookends being create opportunities, a student-centered program and facilities, and we have sustainable growth, right? And with those bookends in our lane, we work with the superintendent to make recommendations on how we can drive productivity and efficiencies, both within the staff and administration, to say, okay, how do we create a sustainable path forward from a budgetary perspective, facilities and program, while we're providing that student-centered curriculum and district as a whole? And so, the recommendations that come to us are really decided at the management level by the superintendent, and then we take that data input, and we evaluate if that meets our criteria, and then we move from there.
All right, thank you. You touched on this a bit earlier, but what is the plan for computer classes?
I don't know that that's worked out entirely. I know several weeks ago, we sat down with one of the elementary schools and had the principal and vice-principal there, supportive of what the decisions that were there and saying, and here's how they plan on taking care of it, right? That this type of instruction is, can be better provided, or, I guess I don't want to use better, that might have some connotations I don't want to provide. But again, our goal was, you get the same experience, you get the same information. If it's done differently, we're okay with that. That's the board's role, is up at the high level. So, those plans are being worked to say, okay, we are going to do things differently. We made the decision with the support, and it wasn't just a top-down decision, it was actually from the administrative teams in terms of the principals and vice-principals and the superintendences and superintendents, all those who looked at it to say, it's there. So, the plan, I don't know, but I know part of it, in terms of it's not in place, it's not hard-written yet, is to say, you know, we can use our health teachers. Some things make sense to be done by the health teacher, perhaps, to say, you know, what we call the internet safety, is that the right place? They're talking about so many other areas of safety. Are these the people trained, certified, to teach that? The library media specialist, I loved our library presentation yesterday, because they emphasized how much technology-driven libraries are, and that these are the right people to know the technology as it's changing, because it changes the library world today for them, therefore, they're able to pass that on to the students in real time. And I think it's appropriate for them to take some of those. So, we know those plans are still being developed, and they will continue over the summer, so that curriculums get in place and that they can be rolled out consistently throughout our different schools. But do we have a plan today? I don't think that it's yet formalized.
And that's not our plan as a board. That's not our plan. That's the district plans. Again, our role in this is to say, we want a student-centered program that teaches computers, right? And teaches all the skills and curriculum that was being taught before. That still needs to be taught. Now, how that gets taught is really up to the superintendent and the administrators of the buildings to really work out. But from our perspective, we just want to make sure that children are taught in the right way.
And I just would add, I think there was concern in some of our forums in terms of having the library, the librarians take on some of the technology teaching. And I think exactly what Peter said, that actually, if you go into a library these days, it is so technology-driven, and they have such expertise. I know when I was doing a dissertation, they managed all the databases for me and helped me sort through things. They come at this with a lot of training and expertise and our teachers. And so, this actually falls naturally into what I think they do in any case.
Thank you again. Can you please explain why Fairport Central School District needs director positions, such as special area math and technology humanities and et cetera?
I don't know that I can in terms of specific details, but I go back to an organization of 6,000 students, 1,000 employees, and needing to run it in a way that manages our resources appropriately. Resources being both people, money, technology, buildings. And to me, that's the answer, right? That these are the people who are looking at that specific to their area. How do we make sure we run our humanities area the best way possible, giving students the best experience? Again, that's the board mandate, best experience and sustainability, long-term plans. So, that's what I see. We need to maintain ourselves as an organization. We do not want to chop off the top and say, okay, we can get rid of every position that's at the White House, that's what we call it, right? The district office, and then expect that we can run efficiently. And we can't, and even if we kept all of them there, but we got rid of the mid-level, I suppose, leadership, it seems like we would create a little bit more chaos, or a lot more chaos than we would want. Those positions have value in helping us manage our district and keep it running in the way we want it to run, which is good for students.
And I think one of the recommendations that came out fairly strongly from the DAC was about alignment and curriculum alignment and experiences of children across our different schools, and making those as similar as possible. And I think in order to do that, you need an organizational structure that fosters that, and directorships would fall under that. So, that makes sense to me.
All right, thank you. Next question. Why would the Board of Education think it is appropriate to increase spending on sports while academic and co-curricular programs are being frozen or cut?
I would imagine you're looking at some contractual issues. That's my answer to that, and it doesn't sound exciting, but a lot of the information we get, increases in anything that's salary-related, and athletics is 100% salary-related. There's not that much, well, there is equipment, but so much of it has to do with how much do we pay for our coaches, how much do we pay for, I don't know if you're talking extra, which sports you're talking about, whether you're talking about sports or athletics in the school program. So, there's different things, but clubs and all of those things are based on contractual agreements. Because I looked at that question, that thought, and said, why is it so much? And I said, it's such a small portion of our budget, that it's easy to say, if 100% of that particular budget, or 90% is suddenly all salaries, what does it make up? Then there's contractual issues. And as we've said, And as we've said, salaries is the piece that sometimes is a piece that, that, I'm not saying it's out of control, but it does have extra pieces there, where you're adding retirement system money, retaining other things there. So I think that the answer has to do with the fact that it's a small portion of the budget, it is not huge in its total impact. And, and sometimes, as a result, it looks like a bigger raise than it does when you're looking at, what does it cost to run a building? And I think that's, that question surprised me, and that's the only answer I can give you. It certainly was not intentional, oh, let's have more sports and cut other things. In fact, this past year, some of our sports programs, we weren't able to, to have them. So, it's, it's, it's an odd number, and I think it's just one of those anomalies that comes with not always being able to compare the same things.
Some of the premise I, I challenge, in terms of cuts of co-curricular and programs, kind of where I started, right? That because we do things differently, doesn't mean the program's been cut. And, and the computer class, as you mentioned, spreading it out, making sure, insisting that the same information, the same knowledge is being imparted to students, doesn't mean the program's been cut. It means it is being done differently. And, and so I, I kind of think of that. We've, we're redoing things differently. So I don't know that it's a fair comparison, but, you know, I threw that out there.
Yeah, Sam, I would just say, the, the way I think that question was posed, why would the board want to increase spending on sports, but cut programming, cut, cuts, cut staff? And the answer is, we don't. We don't want that, right? So if that's, you know, for multiple reasons that Maureen talked about, that could be a reason why costs did go up in that one category. But, believe me, as a board, we would not want to increase spending on sports, but at the same time, cutting other, other programs.
Has the district considered only self-funded field trips, reducing or cutting the number of field trips?
I'm not sure what's meant by self-funded field trips.
We are, have a policy committee, and we've been talking about field trips this year. And one of the things we want to make sure is that we have equity, and that we want our students to go on appropriate field trips. So when, there's a couple of different things when you think about field trips. We just said, yes, we want students to go on field trips, and we just approved a wide variety of them, that all of the kids in kindergarten, all of the kids in first grade in this building, will go on a field trip to such and such. So there's those kinds of field trips that we have authority over and, and approve. Because if it costs money to get admitted to the zoo, we pick up the cost of the zoo. That's not self-funding. Okay, so I'm not sure exactly what that means, but, but we had a long discussion throughout this year about what is an appropriate thing for us to do for field trips. We've changed a polit, we've tried to look at policies, we've talked to lawyers. So self-funding is an interesting conversation. If you're talking about, if you go on a trip overnight to a particular place, and does it have an academic value to it? We want to support that. We're not saying that we're going to take you all to someplace, we want to have some limits on what it is that's being supported. So this, it's an odd, the question is, is misnomer, if you will, we're not supporting self-funded field trips? But, but that's, there's a, that's a tricky, tricky question there, because we do support field trips, we want to make sure that the ones that we support as a district are the ones that everybody can participate in. There are other field trips that kids do participate in that have academic value, and there are some times when we pick up some of those costs, and we ask other people to pick up other parts of the cost. And that's another issue, so it's a, that's a tricky question. Don't, I don't have the answer for that, but, Damon, I'm sure you'd love to.
Well, and if self-funded means the student pays, then, then I would have real challenges and be very opposed to going to a self-funded model. In that, when I think about the free and reduced lunch percentage that we have in this district, it has jumped up from what was 12% to 20%. It used to be single digits, if we go back far enough. And if we're saying that 80% of the students can afford to go and go to the zoo, but we're going to leave 20% behind, I'd be very opposed to that. This is a public school. We tax everybody, whether they have children or not, and we do that for the benefit of all the students, not just for, you know, even a majority, but leaving some behind. So I don't know if that's what meant by self-funded. Regardless, I'll put myself way out there and say, I'm very opposed, if that's what is meant by it, I want everybody to be able to participate.
Right. I will, I will say that fundamentally, we believe that field trips are valuable in terms of education, right? There's a lot that children learn, a lot of experiences they have, that they do outside of the school. And field trips are very valuable, and we do want to support that, right? And we do want to, as they talked about, we do want to fund those things to make sure that all kids can participate. However, that being said, and this is a little bit complicated, but there are some field trips that are self-funded, right? There are some field trips that if you want to go on this trip, or whatever, the student does pay. And I think we have that type of hybrid environment. There's, there's very few absolutes, where we're all this, or all that. There's somewhere, somewhat in the middle, but fundamentally, we believe in field trips, we believe in the experiences and the education value. We fund where we can, and, and where we want to make sure that we have equity, and then other field trips and experiences are self-funded.
Why did planning for the Transportation Center not include arrangements to pay for the shuttling of bus drivers to the Transportation Center?
Kind of a hindsight question, and I'm not sure I, I have an answer, at least. It does seem like we should have potentially anticipated that. I, I don't know if the original plans recognized that we would have to move all the people off. In the end, but, I don't know, that matters, we are where we are now, and trying to still ask questions. Even last night, there were a couple of questions asked about alternatives. It doesn't mean we won't look at that even further. It's just, as a hindsight, yep, it didn't come up, and so it's not there. What, what does change, even some of the things we asked last night in asking questions, we say, what if we did this? And part of the response was, we, we could do that, and maybe it saves us money upfront. So if we spend 340,000, 360,000 is what's scheduled or budgeted for the, the shuttling. So that's aidable, right? That means the state will pay us 67 cents, 70 cents on every dollar. But if we did other things, they wouldn't pay us anything, so we could end up saving money overall, but it cost the district more, because we wouldn't get any aid. And so that's why we ask the questions. It's why we are continuing to look at and say, okay, where we are today, is there a way to do it where we can still get aid and do it less expensively, or how do we save the district money? Where we are is we now, you know, at this time, we're still budgeting 360,000 to shuttle people, the drivers to and from our bus garage.
And so just, just to clarify that, 360,000 is what we're budgeting this year. So when we spend 360,000 this year, we get reimbursed on 60% of that approximately next year. So when it comes to revenues next year, we'll see, we'll see reimbursements, if you will, that will come in next year for money we spent this year. So, again, in hindsight, yeah, that should have been a component, a small component of the overall project. But at the, you know, as Peter talked about, the options that we have this year are really dictated by a lot of different factors, and one of them is, what do we get aid on from the state to get reimbursed for that, those expenditures?
I don't know if you saw me shaking my head, but I'd just remind any of you who vote on this, it's considered a capital project. And the only thing you can do on a capital project is buildings, things that are permanent. The process is a different thing that we couldn't have voted on last year, because I'm just, I'm thinking in terms of, why didn't this ever come up? Because it was a capital project, and capital projects are very, very specific in what you can vote, what we can ask the community for. And we can only ask the community to give us a building, something physical to look at. We can ask the building to begin, the community to give us money for transportation, and we can get buses from that, but we cannot use that same money to get, to buy, to pay for the bus drivers. So when the community, there's, there's tricky little things that, when capital projects come up, they only are allowed to do certain things. And that's why it didn't come up last year, because the implementation of it is a whole other piece. The community last year said, yes, we approved the Transportation Project. It did not say, how are you going to make this happen that year of transition? And that's where the, I think the, the question may have come from, is why it didn't come up? Because we were only looking at the capital project of the building itself. And that's what's required by law.
I will say.
So I'll just, I'll just, you know, remind you of that.
I'm, I'm, I'm learning a lot through this process. Again, we didn't go to college for this, so we thought we had it covered when we went through this plan, and we, we didn't think about this at the time. But the next time, we will. I will, for sure. I mean, again, we're, we're constantly learning in this, in this role.
Well, and I think what Maureen's teaching some of us, 19 years of experience, and right, when I think about it, you cannot borrow money for salaries to, to pay the bus drivers. So the 360 we're budgeting is a salary item, it doesn't build the building. And so even if we had thought of it, you have to wonder, could we have rolled it into the borrowing? Probably not. That probably would have been denied. I, I say probably, but I think Maureen's 19 years of experience is saying, no, we can't do that.
I've asked these questions before.
Right. Somebody with 19 years of experience gotten there, and, and so there's, there's a, I'm not sure it's a good reason, we still could have asked potentially two years ago, we didn't, but it wouldn't have mattered in terms of the borrowing itself. We couldn't have rolled those expenses into the bar.
Good question. All right. So, we understand that you, the board, plan to cut seventh-grade art. Will you be combining the art program for both seventh and eighth grades together?
Assuming nobody wants that one. I don't, I don't believe so. Again, that's more master scheduling. The board never gets involved in a master schedule, right? That would definitely be well outside of our lane, in terms of how that works out. So that's the building principals, who do the master schedules for where they are, and manage those things. Indeed, there's a transition year. Anytime we make a change, there's going to be a transition year, and whether we have to tweak or, or decide at the higher level, whether we say, take another look at that. During this transition year, there will be things that are impacted, but, right, master schedule-wise, you know, that's, I don't have an answer there.
And again, from the board's perspective, with a student-centered, I'm sorry, was I interrupting?
That's all right. No, I was just going to say, what we, what we have been told, though, is that the, the programming has not changed, it's just being delivered differently. So that children will be getting the same amount of art classes as they go through the middle school, but they will be delivered in, they'll get classes in sixth grade, and then again, in eighth grade, for longer periods of time, which will allow them to go deeper into the curriculum and have more artistic experiences during those periods. And that, that it was just a more efficient way to deliver it. And there is, it sounds like, a year where children are going to be shorted, have less experience with art, for one year, and that they had come up with some other plans in terms of art clubs and other options, to make sure that they had our opportunities as well. So I think it is a change in terms of the mechanism.
Okay, this is a long one. What steps should the board take to ensure that stipends, funding, and campus space for career-focused co-curricular activities are equitable when compared to the district resources currently allocated to extracurricular recreational activities?
Couldn't you repeat my question?
Yeah. I told you it was long. What steps should the board take to ensure that stipends, funding, and campus space for career-focused co-curricular activities are equitable when compared to the district resources currently allocated to extracurricular recreational activities?
A lot of big words for me. I think the, the answer lies in where we do negotiations with our different bargaining units. Again, that's, the board doesn't get involved in terms of that, we don't sit at the bargaining tables, but that's where a lot of those decisions are made. When they're made, they're made for three years, right? And then we potentially get to revisit them. I say we loosely, again, we, we have a, a team that does those types of negotiations, but those are dictated then and there. And once they, once those are agreed upon, and once we even vote on it, it's set, and people can look at that, they can get access to that, it's a open information. But in terms of that, we, again, we don't get involved in the negotiation itself, I believe that's where all that is guided.
Well, that's, that takes care of the stipend part of the, of the equation, right? And from the stipend perspective, again, that's contractual, we don't really get involved in that. In terms of allocating space to support these programs, that is something that we support. Again, we go back to the administration and superintendent, and we say, we want opportunities for kids, right? We want opportunities for valuable programs, and we want to provide the space required to support the program as well. Now, from actually picking the space and making sure that they're, they're adequate, that's something that we don't get involved in. That's the superintendent and administration make sure that programs that we value have the space they need to be successful.
Right, thank you. Has the district completed any type of transportation route efficiencies?
Yes. Yes.
Simple as that, yes.
My answer is yes. There, there was a study quite a while back, in which we looked at how to make things more efficient, and when you get an outsider, and he says, you need to have, the efficiency is to follow the law. And if you follow the law, and I don't remember the parameters, but if you follow the law, we should not have busing within a certain distance from a school. So a quarter or a half a mile from St. Jefferson Avenue is this place called Fairport Road. And they were seriously expecting us to have kids walk on Fairport Road. That's our district. So did we look at efficiencies? We have looked at efficiencies in the past for bus routes. We've had long studies, but it came down to, what is our culture? What do we want? At what point do we say, how far should a kid have to walk? Because if you, if you, you don't stop at every house where there's a child. So do you do this corner or that corner? And these things are investigated and checked every year. We get some generic information, not the whole report, but every year, they look to see where, where it's happening. And the other piece of the law that's looked at, that you will be interested in, is all of you, whether you ride the bus or not, there should be a spot for you. And it's very interesting at the high school, when we look and say, how many kids want to drive their, their cars? There's a spot for you on a bus, because the state says, there will be a spot for every child on the bus. And the state says, no, I know it's, there's some different parameters on that, but we have looked at things, and we're often limited in what we're looking for. I think it'd be wonderful if we could say, okay, all of you don't want to ride the bus, sign up here. And on the bad day, when the weather's a problem, and you might not want to drive your car to, to school, you better come in anyway. But will there be, but is there a spot for you? Yes, there's a spot for you on the bus. So when you look at the parameters of what we have to do, there's a lot of criticism about the fact that our buses sometimes are empty, or half-full, or whatever, and I remind you that they're always empty at the beginning and the end of the routes. When you get to halfway point, they're half-empty or half-full. If you think about what people see. So, I, I just will say, yes, that, that we have looked at transportation studies, we have considered what they say, and we have taken some of these issues under, to, to look at them. But the things that we look at also are, what's our culture? What are we used to? You know, some parents don't want their kids on the bus, but there's a spot for that kid on the bus. And that's a law. And then there's also our own decisions about safety, that have to do with what's specific to Fairport. And I don't mean to pick on Jefferson Avenue, that's the same thing in, in our other areas too, where, when you look at what's allowed, how far can a kindergarten be without needing to be transported? Some of those kids need to be transported. So, that's a very specific response to your question.
Looking to the future, in terms of strategic initiatives, it will happen again. So yes, it's been done, I can think of twice in my six years, at least that it was more of a focus, and I, I know of at least one more time where it will be a significant focus, looking at those routes, because in our long-term plan, it's, what are we doing with our facilities? Where will students be going? That will impact transportation. So we'll have to do those efficiencies, look, look at again. So, it will happen, I have no doubt, periodically throughout the course of all of our lives.
One other, one other little fact, did you know, did you know that the district is responsible for transporting kids to private schools? So if you go to private school in Fairport, and you're a district resident, the Fairport Central School District is responsible for providing bus capacity and transportation to that school. So, this is another, another thing that I found enlightening when I got on the board, that I didn't understand before.
All right. I've also heard that school buses never cross railroad tracks. Is that true?
Never, ever.
Never, ever.
Like in the district, like the routes? I don't know, maybe not. Anyway.
Oh, that was your question.
No, here's the question.
Thank you.
All right. Can you explain why lower enrollment, yet a stable tax base is leading to problems?
So the math guys, trying to think, assuming something like this would come up. We have costs, some of which we don't control at all, which is unfortunate. That shows the degree that they've taken away local control. And that's fine. We have to know what our levers are. But if I try and do it simple, make it as simple as I can on math side, I think, let's make it 100 million. We're more than $100 million budget, but I want to make it 100 million. If our revenues can only go up by $2 million, but our expenses go up by $3 million, after one year, we're $1 million in the hole. The next year, our revenues go from 101 to 102, but our expenses went, or to 100, sorry, from 101 to 102 to 104, because they go up by $2 million a year, sorry. But our expenses went from 103 to 106. So in year two, we are now down, right, initial $2 million cumulative of three. Let's go a third year, where our revenues go from 104 to 106, but our expenses go from 106 to 109. Now we're down three that year, but cumulative $6 million in the hole, right? So we have expenses that are like that. As Damon pointed out earlier, the state says, you know, Fairport, this year, we're only going to give you 1.5% more. But our health insurance company contacts us and says, you know, your expenses are going up 9%, right? That's a significant mismatch, right? The state passes a law, and it's hugely supportive, right? And I imagine in the prior life, I probably would have supported it myself until I was on the school board, of a tax cap, right? Hugely popular, there's no chance it's going to change, but it took away some local control for us to do things in different years that we might need. So we want to do a major construction project. Perhaps there's a good reason to go beyond that. But that limits our ability to raise revenue where we have expenses that we cannot control so easily. Healthcare is one of them. Retirement's another that's dictated to us. We have contractual obligations that we make, right? And all these things add in so that our expenses truly outpace our revenue-raising capacity. That being the case, we have a systemic challenge that we must address. Even with declining enrollment, we would have this, even without declining enrollment, we would have that systemic challenge, and we'd have to address it much differently.
It'd be worse.
Yeah, it'd be much worse, huh? Yep. And so, you know, what if our enrollment turns around? We can do a lot of what is, but we will be looking at that now. We have a framework to address that. Again, in the past, an opportunity would come to us, and we would look at it independent of anything else, and we wouldn't ask, is it sustainable? If we say yes. Those decisions were right at the time. They were right in terms of, they felt good. Everybody wanted us to do that. There were a lot of cheers and applause for doing this and that over the course of my six years. But we were doing it, it wasn't that any individual one was a mistake. We were doing it in light of that independent of itself, and that's no longer going to happen. So is it just that right to decline enrollment and fiscal challenges? We cannot control everything on the expense side as much as you think we would like to, right? We can't tell the state, sorry, they told us, 15% is your retirement contribution of payroll. I would love to say, you know what? We're just going to do 10. And we're going to make it 10 every year so that we can budget that for the rest of eternity, because there used to be a time where the district didn't contribute more than 2% of our salaries. So imagine what happened when it went from 2% to over 20, and now it's back down to 15. This is not something we can project easily to say in five years, what's going to be the impact. I would love to say 10% every year, because we can project it and we can make better decisions, but we don't get that power. We get dictated by the state, it's dictated to us from a health insurance company. Here's what your expense is going to be. We don't know what it'll be the year after, so you can't budget two years from now what you're going to do. We have to take the levers that we do have and move them when and where we can. That is the challenge, the environment that we find ourselves in right now.
So the district advisory council and the long-range planning that we're doing right now is trying to get some of that predictability back. Because if we just go year to year, we're subject to the inputs that come at us that we don't control. And a short answer to your question, the reason that it's a problem is because there's too many variables we don't control. So we need to figure out how we can control more of those things, provide effective, productive, efficient ways of educating our kids, staying student-centered, but we have to, we have to think differently than we have in the past.
I almost felt like I was on the Board again. I wanted to jump in a few times. But thank you, Board members, and thanks, students. And this concludes our question and answer segment. And thank you to all the community members that took the time to submit questions. They were very thoughtful. I thought our answers gave us a lot more information and make us that much more educated to make good decisions. So I just invite anyone on the Board that wants to make any final comments or statement, if there's anything in there that you just didn't have a chance to get out yet. You have a few minutes for closing remarks. All right.
I'd like to make, I'm Damon, my turn first. Just remind people to vote on, to vote for this, whether, whatever you'd like to do, because we're not allowed to advocate for the budget, but remind you to vote on the budget and about the candidates, and the library budget and the library candidate is also available the same day. So would you please, all of you watching, make sure you remember to vote. Joanna Perrin, 6 to 9, May 15th. Did I miss anything? Okay, that's my advertisement.
6 to 9. I was just going to thank you, Ms. Tendaway. I never felt so good about being on the Board than after I did after your opening speech. That was very nice. And thank you to the students. You did a really nice job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, in closing, being a PS Board member, there's always been that one common theme that no matter who changes, we all have stayed constant to focusing on what is the best thing for all our kids. And when we say that we're all a family and we all work together, I think everyone in this district takes it very seriously. So thank you for following through those good, strong additions. Thank you to our superintendent and everybody that works in the district and works so well for all our kids. And that's it. Everyone have a safe trip home, and thank you for coming and listening. Good night.
Students, thank you.